... the allegiance.
Sorry, we moved the flags, everybody was confused. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez? Mr. Big Ervin?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent Councilmember.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that we excuse Councilmember Perez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, we're gonna kick off this meeting with a very special presentation. Sonia, you're gonna come up. This is a presentation on Renton's sister city of Nishiwaki.
Good evening, Mayor Law, Council President Corman, Councilmembers and guests. My name is Sonia Mailander, Community Relations and Events Coordinator for the City of Renton. Tonight's special presentation will give a brief summary of our recent Sister City delegation trip to Nishiwaki, Japan. Cities become sister cities as they develop people-to-people relationships and may have similarities in geography and industry. Nishiwaki has a beautiful river that runs right through the center of town, and they are a city of industry, known internationally for their production of textiles and fly-fishing hooks. Our alliance with Nishiwaki began in 1969, led with efforts by our Renton Lions Club, other service clubs, and organizations at the time. Nishiwaki is located in the region or prefecture of Hyogo. The Washington and Hyogo Sister State Alliance and support from our longtime partnership with the Hyogo Business and Cultural Center, which is located in downtown Seattle, helped to provide, strengthen and sustain our longtime relationship. Today, volunteers from the Renton Sister Cities Association help coordinate programming and activities in partnership with the city. Our Renton School District also has a wonderful history of coordinating annual middle school student exchanges since the 1980s. To continue with our presentation and this year's delegation visit, I am pleased to welcome and introduce Chris Johnson, who's currently the Chairman for the Renton-Nishiwaki Sister City Committee.
Hello, Chris.
Hello, Mayor Law, City Council. I'm very pleased to be here today. A little bit nervous, but excited.
Why don't you make the presentation in Japanese?
You really want it in Japanese?
Trust me, he can do it.
Well, I, you know, I have to tell you that our friends in Nishiwaki are watching, so they would appreciate it, but I don't know that anybody else would. My name is Chris Johnson. I've lived in the City of Renton for just about 20 years here. In fact, as of next month, it will be exactly 20 years. I'm proud to be a citizen of Renton and very proud to be a member of this delegation. The delegation itself was comprised of members of the City Council, President Corman, Councilwoman Witchy, as well as city workers and former city workers, local business leaders, citizens of the community, college and high school students. We had just over 20 people total go to Japan, and it was a wonderful, wonderful adventure. In Japan, the delegates had the option to stay with a host family, and about half of them took advantage of that option. The other, the other half of the delegates stayed in a hotel at their own expense, but everyone had, had a good time. Our first day in Japan, we were hosted at Nishiwaki City Hall by Mayor Katayama, who was here last, last year, in the, was it last year?
2014.
2014, when the delegation came in 2014. And at City Hall, President Corman was presented with a gift from Nishiwaki City. President Corman, and Mayor Law, I wanted to show this to everyone, and, and then probably give it to you, Randy.
Okay.
But you, I don't know if you wanted to.
You know, I'm, I'm, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I'm gonna make a suggestion. Why don't we, at the end of the presentation, why don't we get the delegation up here, and we'll, the mayor and I'll formally hold it up, and we can send the picture back to Nishiwaki.
So, we, here's, this is just a group picture of all of us at City Hall. This is the, the City Council of Nishiwaki, including some local business leaders and community leaders. We even made the, the cover of the city newsletter for the month of May. After, after City Hall, we left and went to a local park. It's called Dojiyama Cultural Center and Park. There, we had a picnic under the cherry blossoms. We like to get together for group photos, so you'll see lots of those. We also had local and nationwide news coverage of our visit there. We had some, some regional newspapers, as well as a national newspaper, do articles about our visit. After the, the picnic, we went to the, see, the Earth Science Museum. Now, the Earth Science Museum is situated around the spot that is the exact center of Japan, and Japan, or Nishiwaki itself calls itself the navel of Japan because it sits in the, the exact geographic center of Japan. The cultural center, or the, the center there, the Earth Science Museum was wonderful. A lot of interactive adventures for both children and adults, and I can tell, you can ask Randy, or Carol Anne, or whoever else was there, that there were lots of things that people wanted to do that we couldn't, because we didn't have the time or the right clothing, but, but it was, it was fun. Nishiwaki is known for its textiles. We were able to visit a traditional textile manufacturing museum, where they had mills or looms that were running, and we got to watch them actually produce traditional cloth. After, after that, we were hosted by the Nishiwaki Lions Club. Now, this is a relationship that goes back 47 years, and in the upper right picture, you can see Roger Richard, who visited Nishiwaki 47 years ago, along with the current president of the Nishiwaki Lions Club. On the bottom right picture, the Nishiwaki Lions Club used their funds that they raised and bought violins and donated them to a local musical group, and these students came and performed for us. We have a picture of all of us, along with the students and their violins. The next day, we, we were able to go to Kyoto, Japan, which is one of the, it's the cultural and architectural kind of heartbeat of Japan because of the shrines and temples and the long history that it has. One of the first places we went was the Kyomizu Temple. This structure was built in 778 A.D. and was later rebuilt, so its newest renovation, newest full renovation was in 1733, and then it has ongoing renovations about every 30 or 40 or 50 years. As you enter the temples, it's tradition to purify yourself, and there's usually a water fountain, along with cups on long poles that you can use to wash your hands and purify yourself before you enter the temple. We've visited numerous other temples, and again, we'd like to take lots of group pictures. One of the major, not, not objectives or a trip, but one of the major focuses ended up being food. The food was wonderful. It tasted wonderful. We were treated to many different types of food. The one thing about the food which is, is important to know is that it doesn't only just taste good, but the presentation is just as important as the taste, and some of it was so beautiful, it was hard to eat because you were destroying a piece of art sometimes. Our one rainy day in Japan, it rained, and it rained all day, and it rained hard. We were able to visit the Golden Pavilion, though. Again, this, this pavilion was, was built in 1220, so a very, very long history. We did have one day where the delegates, who were with host families, were able to go do individual activities, so everybody got a wide variety of experiences. In this picture, on the bottom right, one of the things we did was go to a strawberry farm, where for 30 minutes, we could eat as many strawberries as we wanted. And those that missed it, really missed it. It was, it was very good. We then visited the Kishi House. Mr., former Mayor Kishi has been to Renton numerous times. His family is one of the original families in Nishiwaki. This home here is considered a cultural legacy as part of Nishiwaki. We were able to visit the home here. As we were here, and while we were here, they did a, one of our host families did a kimono demonstration, how to put on a kimono, and they also did a kimono fashion show. We also had a musical group perform, which was very fun, and in this picture, you see us all doing a traditional festival dance to that music. After we finished with the music, they let some people, and I see you up there, you'll be in the next one, Carol Anne. They let us play the drums and put on some of the samurai gear and equipment. Again, this is, this here is the, the piece, the article that was put out in the Yomiuri Shinbun, which is the national newspaper in Japan. So, Carol, you made, you made headline news in Japan. And then our final group picture in front of the Kishi House, as we were getting ready to leave. There on the left, in the red kimono, is the performer that performed for us. She's a professional, was very good. And then on the lower right is Anya Mai, my niece who went with us. She is petting the fish. Himeji Castle, we went to the Himeji Castle the next day. This is a large, it's a huge structure. It was built in, in, was it 1333, and then took about 250 years to complete. And in front of the Himeji Castle, there's a large parade ground, and there, we were able to sit down and have a wonderful picnic underneath the cherry blossoms. Now, we hit the seasons just right. We were there just as the cherry blossoms were at full bloom, and one of the, the things about cherry blossoms is, in, in Japan, they say that they're the most beautiful the moments before they, they fall, and cherry blossoms have a very short life, and as we were there, they were starting to fall, and they were blowing across where we're having the picnic, so we had perfect, perfect timing on that one. We returned to Nishiwaki to their, their new Midae Cultural Center. This is a new cultural center that they've created and built to bring the community together. It involves, it actively involves children and youth and adults, and they have a large number of people use this center, so there, there are rooms for classrooms, there's a library, there are sports facilities. While we were there, the local high school fashion club presented us with a fashion show. Now, these girls designed and, and sewed all of their own dresses, their, their costumes, and it was nice. It was like a real, real fashion show. This was not an amateur thing. They, they displayed where from, all the way from workwear to formal wear, to ballroom wear, to fun party wear, to casual wear. And as we were there, I was talking with, with Mayor Katayama a little bit. One of the things he really emphasized was, he felt a strong need for the youth to have a broad vision about the future and have experiences that would help them understand the world that they're growing up in, and the possibilities and the opportunities that they would have. So, he's very proactive about encouraging his students to go out and learn these things. These students in the fashion club have had the opportunity to go to, go to Tokyo for fashion shows, as well as Paris for fashion shows, so they're very proactive about, about educating their students. Our final party was at a place called the Marmalade Cafe, and we had a group called the Tinker Bells perform for us. We had city officials there, as well as local business officials, we had host families, we had a lot of, of people. As we, we finished up there, they, they gave each of us, each of the delegates, a gift of a scarf that was handmade from the local fabrics, just a beautiful, local, you know, memento of our trip. This is right at the end of the party. We're all giving a toast. This was a time where we, I think we really realized that, that we had all created new friendships, we'd renewed old friendships, and we, we talked about or looked forward to the future of what we could have as far as friendship. Now, the next morning, oh, this is, again, the final group picture, before we left with our host families, the city officials, the community officials, and, and all of our delegates. The next morning, as we're leaving to get on the bus, leaving is always a, always a sad thing, some, you know, it's a sad thing, but I think we realized, again, that, that as we were leaving, we had friends, we had better friends, and we were looking forward to our future opportunities to develop those friendships. So, it was a joyful, as well as a sad, sad experience. Finally, here, we're, we're coming up on the 50-year anniversary of the Renton-Nishiwaki relationship. In the year 2019, Nishiwaki will be sending a delegation to Renton, and the Renton-Nishiwaki Committee is just beginning to plan activities for this delegation visit and this celebration. So, we're looking to, to work with the city and with the local community groups to, it's hard to do, do, do one better than the Japanese did for us, but, but we, we plan to try. Any questions from the council?
Council, have any questions? I know Carol Anne and Randy may have a comment or two.
My daughter goes to bed every night listening to the Tinker Bells. She loves it. And just the relationships we build with our host family, and even the extended host families. We didn't stay with, you know, we stayed with one family, but when we got together as a group, they were all just so amazing and interested in getting to know us, and, you know, just collectively, they're some of the best people I think I've met.
Randy?
Yes, Mayor Katayama and the citizens of Nishiwaki formally extended all their warm wishes to the entire community of Renton, and to you, Mr. Mayor, and we had such an enjoyable time. Chris has done an excellent job summarizing it, but I also have to say, and I know I'm saying this on behalf of the entire delegation, we could not have had a better leader for this, his, his ability to, we should give him a round of applause for this.
With our group, it was easy. We didn't lose anybody.
We didn't lose anybody. He, he was, he was always, he'd planned the right amount of time to, you know, to get us ready, and, and he was, he was working minute by minute with gracious hosts in Nishiwaki, but could always make sure we were in the right place at the right time, and thank you so much, Chris, for your role in this, and I've certainly built an even stronger bond with the people in Nishiwaki and the people that were on the delegation. And if I may, I'd just also like to point out that the, the delegation members did cover their own costs, so it wasn't covered by the City of Renton. The City of Nishiwaki was, was very generous in, in their support for this trip.
Thanks, Randy. Well, Chris, I agree, having had the opportunity to go to Nishiwaki, it's hard to match the hospitality and the treatment that you receive from the people in Nishiwaki. It's, it's really an experience that everybody should have at least once in their lifetime, so. We very much appreciate you giving the recap and being here tonight. I wanted to ask you a question. Did Ted Rodriguez and Vanessa Dolby learn Japanese while they were there?
I, I think they, they ate enough Japanese food that they qualify as half-Japanese.
Okay, that's good to know.
Ted knows where all the ice cream is.
Ted's been there a couple times, so he knows, he knows his way around, so. Thank you very much. We want to arrange for the picture.
Yeah, why don't we, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest maybe the delegation could get up front, and maybe the, the council could stand behind, and if, if I can just formally hand you the, the picture.
Sure.
So that we're passing it to the city.
We're gonna have all of the delegates come up, everybody.
Yeah, I think maybe, yeah, no.
I'm conflicted.
Yeah, maybe come on down.
Wherever you want to go.
I guess I'll stand next to my husband.
Look like an all-male council.
They're gonna just think they have an handsome, handsome city council.
So, if I could get the delegation, you guys can just spread out. You have an arc behind there, we don't need to double up, I think we got plenty enough room, so it just, because I don't want anybody being hit on it, so if you, ladies, you can get on this side over here, there'd be great, or?
Don't worry, that happens all the time.
Just fold it down so it's not covering anybody up. There we go. So, you guys, if you can kind of step out this way, we're just making a little kind of a group around here, there we go.
I don't think we can see Carol Anne. Carol Anne, you're gonna have to come around to the side.
You're with a shirt for it, Carol Anne.
Ed, can you move over that way just a little bit?
No.
Perfect. Okay, guys. All right, here we go. Get a smile from everybody. That's perfect. Everyone say Nishiwaki. Perfect, looks good. Thank you.
Thanks again, Chris and Sonia, and the delegation for being here tonight. We appreciate that very much. Okay, moving on to less fun things. A little tighter report, Mr. Covington.
Although I did say, I just got a commitment from Roger that he'll be here for the 50th anniversary, so that's pretty awesome, that he threw all of those since clear back in 1979. Onto a few other things. I want to just mention to the community and the council, we, we invite the community to come and join us Monday, May 30th, at 1:00 P.M. at our Veterans Memorial Park, the corner of Main and Third, for a short and brief ceremony honoring our veterans. It's always been a, a nice little celebration that we have, and honor of honor and respect for those who've sacrificed for our country. Also want to let the community know that we've installed some temporary four-foot-high chain link fencing on the wood deck outside of the Ivors Restaurant at Jean Coulon Memorial Park. The fencing is to keep visitors from walking on the portions of the deck that are fenced off. We had a recent structural assessment to determine that some of the 33-year-old steel beams supporting the deck are not up to full strength due to exposure to the elements, and so we're gonna be replacing those. We're gonna wait, though, until after the summer season, and so we'll do it later in 2016, when all the permits have been obtained, and Ivors and Kid Valley Restaurants will remain open, as will access to the North Water Walk and the temporary boat moorage. And then, just a reminder again of a number of traffic and street projects that we've got going, same, the same streets primarily as in previous weeks, so just, folks, be aware, as you're out and you see barricades, you see people in the street, please use caution and patience, and we'll get this work done for you so you can have better roads to drive on. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Covington. Moving on to audience comments, we have one individual like to address the council. Could you please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record? You have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Mike Grijalva, spelled G-R-I-J-A-L-V-A. The J is pronounced like an H, and I'd like to give you these handouts.
You can just hand it to the clerk there. Thank you.
I didn't bring a visual aid here, so those are the photos, or the photo, of the area I'm concerned with. I wanted to make you aware of a dangerous area on the Cedar River, and this is very near the King County-Renton City Line, and unfortunately, it's not in King County, because I'm a member and chair right now of the River Safety Council, which was formed to help advise King County on issues of safety in, in regard to any work they might do in the rivers. And this log jam that you see pictured there occurred a number of years ago when there was a landslide on the right bank upstream from this area, and all of those trees and logs were deposited in the river there, and it's created a serious danger. The council looked at cutting out some of the trees that span the river there, but we started getting permits and then decided that would be not enough safety to, to help the situation. There's a very swift current there that pushes towards the outside, and I might explain, that's an aerial photograph taken, it's facing south, and this area is just at the corner of Ron Regis Park, so it is accessed by a number of people from the public and teenagers partying and stuff down there, and so it is used. And as you're probably aware, this last summer, we had a lot of hot days, a tremendous number of people utilizing the river. There were cars parked all over Highway 169 that I was surprised even at where they were found to park and to access the river. This area, being right at the beginning of Renton, is a, one that would, oh, thank you, that would be a wonderful area for, for people to recreate, but this log jam area creates quite a danger to people. And first of all, I would say that last year, we had a number of danger and warning signs advising people of this area and suggesting a way to get around it, to portage around through the park. That's a pretty long portage, it's like a half a mile. The area there has a really nice beach and such, and could be used to walk around it in a shorter distance. It would probably benefit by having a more distinct trail built, and eventually, I would love to see these logs rearranged so that the area was safe for the public and would not present this danger. There was a rescue done there a couple of years ago by King County Sheriff's Department. That's pretty much what I wanted to give you information about right now. I've, I've left some information of my name and phone number there, and I'm a member of the Washington Kayak Club and this River Safety Council, and if we could be of any assistance, we'd like to help you, and hopefully in the future, we could clean this area up. It would make a wonderful area to have, to float for people to come from that area, which is Ron Regis Park, and there's lots of adequate parking and facilities down to the Cedar River Trail Park down at, at Interstate 405. So, it would be good if we could clean this up for recreation's sake.
Well, I appreciate you very much coming out today with this, and we agree with you. I know over a number of years, we've had issues come up with others very concerned about the safety in the river. I'm sure you know Chuck Pillon, who has been an advocate for these concerns for a lot of years. We've been frustrated quite a bit with the lack of our authority, actually, to do much in the river, and we've worked very closely with King County and the King County Sheriff's Office, and, and I think, Greg, if I'm not mistaken, we were pretty much, our hands were pretty much tied, other than to putting up the signs, the warning signs, as, as you had mentioned, and, and it can be very frustrating. We'll, we'll take another run at the county, because I, I think your comments and your concerns are very, very valid, and it's an unfortunate handicap to being able to utilize the river to its, its fullest, and, and I see you've mentioned here that the Department of Fisheries says it's okay to move the logs, so, you know, that in itself was oftentimes a big hurdle, so, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the county again and keep you informed of anything that we learn, and appreciate your willingness to work with us on it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Yes, Mr. Corman.
And I, I wanted to thank you for all those comments and, and just point out that, yeah, I've been involved in this discussion in the past, too, and I, I think people mistake this for the natural condition, when in fact, it's not. It's a condition of, that's caused by flooding, which is caused by unabated development, which starts taking more trees down. If this was, if this was a river in the wild somewhere, it wouldn't get so much wood all at one time, and so, I mean, certainly, you'll find, you'll find wood in other rivers, but the amount that gets carried into this one really needs to be addressed, and it is really hazardous, so thank you for continuing to work on that.
Thank you. Howard, were you, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, you weren't signed up, so you're...
I can stand up and say a couple things.
You know, I hate to miss you.
Get invited here. Howard McCombran, I live in Renton. I think what was really fun was having Chris Johnson come here with the Nishiwaki group, because it shows the friendship that is natural for Renton. We have a people-centered city. We have a people-centered city. Everything about our city has to do with people-to-people and volunteerism and helping out. I went on the Internet this last week just to look up, because they said that Renton was the sixth most diverse city in the United States. So, I went to check out the Internet, and you know, it looked like we were. We have all kinds of things here, and it's exciting, because we have so many opportunities, actually, to be an example to the area. I think in my work with Reach, constantly, we have people who are interested in what we're able to accomplish here, and we have a lot of room to grow. We still have lots of things to do, and we appreciate all your support. But there are some exciting things going on, but I think it's proper that we have guys like Chris Johnson, who this is totally volunteer, and he is so capable, and he's just another one of our guys that does things in town. We have, and we have people everywhere who just come and help. And you guys are all a bunch of volunteers yourselves. I know how much you put in for how much you get paid, which is, you know, it takes an hour or something, but it's just fabulous stuff that you do. And I think if we continue to do this with partnering with the city and everybody helping out, it becomes better and better. But this is the cultural universe, cultural center of the universe, right here. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like polled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I would like to remove item number six F for separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus item F.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the consent agenda minus item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Witchy, item F.
Yes, this topic was already, the Transportation Committee was already briefed on this topic, and due to the timeliness of the project, I'd like to move that the cooperative agreement with WashDOT go to council concur.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Witchy, seconded by Mr. Corman, that item F in regards to the Transportation Systems Division Cooperative Agreement be approved as a council concur item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a committee of the whole report to present.
Okay, this committee report is regarding Sound Transit Three Plan comments. The committee of the whole recommends that council direct the administration to provide the following comments on the Sound Transit Three, ST3, plan to the Sound Transit Board. Provide the intensive capital option of the I-405 BRT project from Bellevue to Renton. Provide enhanced parking and access improvements to the South Renton Transit Center. And provide a study of the future potential for light rail in Renton. And this is signed by the council president.
I move that council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with a committee of the whole report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, and let me just add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to see if there's any, the council had talked about trying to do a resolution or something, but I think for purposes of this coming week, I think this will be sufficient.
Yeah, and I would suggest, too, we're on a fairly tight timeline, and we should be hearing back on where we stand here pretty quick.
Okay, very good. Okay, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one finance committee report. Or I guess we have two finance committee reports.
Yes, there are two. The first finance committee report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on May 23rd, 2016, claims vouchers three, four, six, nine, eight, one, through three, four, seven, three, seven, two, one wire transfer, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $7,747,428.76. And payroll vouchers, including 756 direct deposits and 41 payroll checks totaling $1,734,988.65. And this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The second committee report is regarding consortium project, fiber project agreement seventy. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the interlocal agreement with participating cities and public not-for-profit entities, which will deliver a high-speed optical network around Lake Washington. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be adopted, and this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is the consortium, and the fiber optics is a whole line all the way around Lake Washington that has been built by all the member cities along the way, and at a very relatively low cost, because as the city saw an opportunity that there was work going on, they put in conduit so that we could pull fiber optic. So, this has really been a very low-cost project for the city of Renton and all the other cities, but it'll tie us all into high-speed fiber optic, which is really good. With that, I recommend the council, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to legislation, we have one resolution, one ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay, the resolution is a resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an addendum to the Community Connectivity Consortium's Project Agreement template policy between the city of Renton and the cities of Auburn, Bellevue, Kirkland, Seattle, and King County, Renton School District, University of Washington, and Valley Communications.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
This ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending sections of Chapter Two, Zoning Districts, Uses and Standards, and Section 411040 of Chapter 11, Definitions of Title Four Development Regulations of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing the downtown business district by amending references, regulations, and the definition of downtown pedestrian district.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McIrvin, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Thank you, Megan. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few items tonight. The first is, I would like to formally propose and get council agreement, if possible, with RFA board representation. The Renton Fire Authority has, as part of the bylaws, three council members would represent the city on that board. And I know in the past, we've had some sort of obvious candidates jump out that have been part of, you know, the planning for this. And then, we had one substitution, which personally I'm satisfied with, very happy with. So, if I've got this right, I think it's Mr. Pavoni, Mr. Prince, and Mr. Person seem like the, you know, they'd be good representatives for us, and so I guess with that, I'd like to move that they would, as we get started here, be our representatives on that board.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. McIrvin, that council member Person, council member Pavoni, council member Prince be the city's representative on the Regional Fire Authority Governing Board. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, I thank them for their willingness to do that service. And then, I have some meetings to announce. So, the first thing is, reminder that May 30th is a city holiday, it's Memorial Day. And then, I want to announce that on June 6th, Monday, June 6th, at 5:30 P.M., we're going to have a meet and greet with Jan Hahn, ASD Administrator Candidate, in Mayor's office area. And then, at 6:00 P.M., committed the whole meeting in the Council Conferencing Center. One item on that agenda, Cascadia Emergency Management Exercise Briefing. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am, the planned development committee meeting regularly scheduled for May 26th is canceled.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
No new business.
Okay, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, I have two items, Mr. Mayor. First of all, on Thursday, May 26th, at 4:00 P.M., the Community Services Committee will be meeting. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the Farmers Market PICH, Partnerships to Improve Community Health Grant Briefing, as well as FINI, Food Insecurity and Nutrition Incentive Grant Briefing. And on Monday, June 6th, the Schedule Transportation Committee has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 6th, at 5:00 P.M. in the council conference room. There's two items on the agenda. The first, replace Highland's 435 Pressure Zone Reservoirs and Manes. The second item is Addendum Six to the CAG-13-105 with Coast and Harbor Engineering for the Cedar River Gravel Removal Project. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, that wraps things up. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.